I'm going to call to order the special workshop, Murfreesboro City Council's special workshop. We're here at the Murfreesboro Municipal Airport. It's Wednesday, November 17th at 10:00 a.m. If you'll bow your heads with me, we'll say a quick prayer and also do our pledge. Father, thank you for this day, this chance that we get to come together at a season of year that we get to be thankful for so many things. I'm thankful for each member that's on this council. Lord, we pray for those on the council, those needs that are spoken and unspoken. Lord, that you be with us, that you bless us. You give us knowledge, give us the ability to be able to make decisions that will be fitting on to this community but to you. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we'll move right into action items and we've got, Gary is not here today, so we've got a purchase of office building, 312 South Church Street.
Sam's going to take that.
Yeah, Sam's handling that for us.
Good morning, mayor members of council. We're here with a contract to purchase 312 South Church Street. The need for this property is related to public right-of-way and public sidewalk improvements from the parking garage exit to Broad Street. It would give us the ability to have two through lanes and a dedicated right turn lane onto Broad Street as well as a wider pedestrian connection. Really factors into our long-term vision for the redevelopment of the bottoms and sort of the backside of City Hall and the City Hall parking garage. The fiscal impact is approximately $675,000. The funding will be addressed in the next budget, or next agenda item, and I'd recommend your approval. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
All right, any questions for Sam?
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Brown, please call the rule.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
All right, we'll move into item two. This is a fiscal year '22 budget amendment ordinance, and this is administration. Craig, or Ms. Brown?
I've got it. It's a, this one's to increase the general fund, use of fund balance by $759,000. $700,000 of it is for the property that was just voted on, and another $59,000 is for a building and codes bid that came in higher than budgeted by about $59,000. There's also a small increase for use of airport fund, fund balance to rebudget the remaining expenses on a contract that was approved back in FY '21.
If no questions, I'll move for approval.
I have a motion. Second. Ms. Brown?
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
And that was first reading of ordinance, 21040. All right, we'll move to item three, Warner Athletic Construction Change Order number three for the soccer, soccer park turf.
Good morning, mayor members of council. This is Change Order number three with Warner Athletics. This is a contractor that is transitioning all of our, I'm sorry, our natural fields to synthetic fields, eight of those. We're in the second phase of that. So this change order includes three things. It's the first of all, it's the relocation of a CUD main water line that cost is $9,500. The second is to adjust the elevation of the Middle Tennessee Electric Main Service Line, which is $15,877. So those first two items have to do with new storm drain interference where the storm drains being installed for the fields. And the third thing is, includes an additional 625 tons of, 625 tons of base stone to get the correct elevation for the indoor practice facility, to raise that approximately four inches to get it to the correct elevation. So that cost, combined with the other two, is $40,099. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
If there are no questions, I'll move for approval. Motion is second. Ms. Brown, please call the rule.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, well, thank you, Nate. We'll now move to workshop items. We'll move to the Salem Highway Basin sewer, sewer study results.
That'll be Darren when he, he's sorry. He's got other matters to handle as well.
Mayor, council, thank you for the opportunity. Wanted to, Valerie Smith and Marshall Fall have worked on this pretty substantively for the past several months, ever since our sewer allocation report. We knew we had some additional issues in the Salem Highway Basin, so we kind of wanted to highlight those and then propose some improvements, but give you all a heads up of where we're at inside that basin. So currently, three special sewer, sanitary sewer assessment districts. There's Salem Barfield, which is $750 per single family unit, Three Rivers Phase Three, which is 900, Basin D, which is 925 per single family unit, and those were set up between 2001 and 2014. Right now, we have 2,412 connections to sewer. That's kind of the darker blue. Those are currently connected to sewer. What we have committed in this basin, we have 1,643 sewer connections committed. Those are the areas in red. So there's some areas that have not, that are not currently connected and not been approved for connections, but we're calling that kind of a future areas to be served. And we have determined that with $6.35 million in improvements, we can get around 3,724 additional connections. Now, that's over 940 acres, so you can kind of do the math. That's not going to be, again, that kind of our first serve, first come, first served policy. I don't expect those 3,700 connections to be distributed uniformly over those 940 acres. Just kind of pointing out, that is the, the area that's remaining that those 3,700 connections could go into. Again, for 6.35 million. So this is kind of a, I don't want to go into too much detail, but this is kind of the extent of the improvements that make up that 6.35 million. Again, that gives us 3,724 new connections. The, probably the easiest thing to do, it may be to combine the current assessment districts with a new assessment district. We've gone in and we've got about 2.3 million remaining, in a remaining balance in those pre-existing assessment districts. If you add that 6.325 million to that, that gives us a total, if you take into account those 1,624 that are currently committed, that's about $1,609 per single family unit. You apply 20-year, three-and-a-half percent. That puts it at $2,264 per single family unit. That is in addition to the $2,250, the buy-in fee, right? We call it our connection fee, but it's really that capacity buy-in fee. So you're looking at about the same amount, right? You're going from $2,250, and either the 750, 925, or 900, you're going into $2,250 plus another $2,264, so roughly $4,500. So the conclusions is that, right now, based on overflow concerns, that we're not, we can't support any increased rezoning request, right? That's going to increase the number of sewer connections. Right now, the system, we can handle the current connections and we can handle the committed connections, but before we go in, if that 1,624 unit starts to increase, we have problems. We start getting into a situation where we have potential overflows, right? Our surcharge condition gets into within a foot of a casting, which kind of violates the EPA protocols for, once you get into that level where you're getting within a foot of a top of casting on a manhole, EPA says, no more connections.
Hey Darren.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, but did, well, maybe you go through, I think I need to back up to the very beginning to make sure I understand something.
Sure.
I'm sorry, but, so when you're talking about, we kind of went right into additional units.
Right.
I'm not sure I understand, I'm sorry about that, but where are we currently? Like, so, it's not like you're saying additional.
Right.
So what we're talking about here is, the very basis of this discussion is it, okay, wait, are we willing to invest $6.3 million into increasing the number of units that we have?
Yes. That's, that's the ultimate ask, is that, I'm asking you the next steps, and I was, the next conclusion was, we're going to bring a engineering proposal forward to you to, to make those improvements, to increase the ability to make more connections. So.
We already have some number of connections, though, that are available in that same 940 acres?
No. We do not.
None.
None.
And the 940 acres, is it within the city, or is it?
Some's in the city, some is outside the city.
This is just property that you've identified as possibly?
It's in the basin.
Okay.
It's in the bowl.
All right.
So we got back, we're, we got 2,412 existing. We've got 1,643 on paper that have been committed, not connected yet, but we're good there. We're saying, hey, what we've committed, we can allow into the system.
So we got 1,100 left?
No, no, no.
Is it?
We've got 1,643 left. Those are okay to come into the, the 2,412 is already in. 1,643 is approved as connections, they've been approved by Planning Commission and City Council to come into the system. That's it. We don't have anything beyond that 640, 1,643, is what we're saying.
So you're saying we're at capacity, what we've already committed? I thought you said it was a 2,700 number that was okay, of which we've done 1,600, though.
No, we're okay with 1,643 that we've committed. We're not okay with additional projects until we make these improvements. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry, I just didn't understand whether or not we're at capacity, or, so we're basically at capacity with what has been?
Committed. Right. We've, we've run the numbers, and so the six, when we make these 1,643 connections, we're going to be at capacity.
All right, all right. Sorry. Just to tie us back into other conversations we've had, we're saying red light in this district is what we're saying.
Right.
Not red light district, but red light in this district.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And that's why I said, we, that's why we're proposing the solution of, listen, there's, there's, you know, money can solve it. Right. It's a $6.35 million solution. We wanted to give you all a heads up, though, that right now, we, as Water Resources Department, we, with these 1,643 on paper that haven't connected, we need to let them connect. We're at capacity, and we really can't approve any additional units in this basin until we make, we outside some lines and move some stuff around.
Okay, I'm sorry to have interrupted you. You want my two conclusions, and I have another question.
We're good.
Okay.
So that's where we went back to, the 3,724, that's what the 6.35 million will gain, will give us. Okay? In addition to the 2,412 plus the 1,643, now we're talking 3,724 for 6.35 million over the 940 acres, in some form or fashion.
What's the timeline for the straw update?
Well, that's where, the next step, we'd like to get, I like to inform you, instead of me just coming forward with a engineering proposal that says, hey, we're going to design 6.35, you'd be like, what, what, why are you bringing this to us? I'm kind of giving you the.
Sorry.
This is the nexus of why I'm going, the next step to bring you a proposal to do the design. So again, this is what we got to do to get those additional 3,724. We can recoup this over a 20-year sewer assessment at 2,264 per connection. We've applied that to, we apply it to the 1,624 plus the 3,724, so we're applying it to almost, to the, to the 5,000 and some odd future units.
Right.
So staff will be coming forward with the design contract, and then a future special sanitary assis, assessment, assessment district to, to recoup these costs. Unless, for some reason, you know, the ARP money, I mean, you know, I don't know, there's, there's, there's a zinger in here with all this ARP money we're talking about, that it's free money, do we do an assessment district at all, or do we just do the, you know, use that money to do the improvements? Our model has been to do an assessment district. So, open for questions. That's really it. Just wanted you to, give you the background to when we bring you the engineering proposal to do these improvements as to the why we need to do them.
Do you happen to know, this may be off, not something that you guys would have looked at, but do you happen to know how many parcels of, how many parcels of land there are that make up this 940 acres?
Yeah, we do. I mean, I don't have that number offhand, but you can see, right there, the orange, we can count those for you. There's, there's a few tracks in there, those acreages are identified. Oh, and I tell, and then the hatched orange also, you can kind of see those hatched, but you could, I could get you that number.
Oh, I see what you're talking about, okay.
Yeah, this area down in here, it's not in the city. I think the dark orange or stuff that's inside the city, and the hatched orange or stuff that's outside the city limits currently. Is that right, Valerie? Yeah.
Talking 25 or 30.
So you would think maybe inside the city limits would be priority versus, but, but, you know, you've got potential, we've always done a first come, first served kind of basis. I can get you more, I can get you as much information as you need.
No, I mean, it's good, I was, you know, I saw that 387 acres earlier, and I was kind of, I.
Yeah, that's several.
In my mind, that may have been one piece of property, and all of a sudden, we spent a $6.3 million primarily for, you know, one person to be able to develop the land, or, you know.
There's several, several tracks in there.
I mean, I, you know, the, something like, this might be a time for us to be able to think about and talk about the whole first come, first served, yeah, in general, you know, I guess if I'm doing my math, we're at about four units per acre, the 3,724 on 940 new acres, is pretty much right at four units per acre.
Right, right.
You know, I guess, you know, if we let one person come in here at, at 16 units per acre, that's going to substantially change what the, what the math looks like and what we really get out of this, this investment.
Right.
You know, I just, for the what it's work on, I think I'd be, I'd be in favor of trying to figure out a way, you know, this is a more finite thing than kind of the whole city, and I don't know that I want to say, well, I want to take completely the first come, first served out, because I get, you know, somebody who's willing to make this, but it didn't like this as some, oh, well, you, you know, because they're willing to come in and make the investment, other people might. I mean, this is, this is all, this is all getting developed.
Right.
Maybe the church.
And, and, you know, there's, we haven't looked at the areas that could potentially be on a step system, too, that the soils out there, they could potentially do a decentralized, if it's a residential, you know, proposed development. They could always do the decentralized version, and really, and they could do a decentralized version and not require it to be annexed. I mean, CUD could own and operate it, too.
I think another thing to consider is that, you know, as you upgrade the pipes and expand the pipes, which allow more capacity, that's the solution we have today for what we're dealing with today. That doesn't mean there will not be a different solution 10 years, 20 years, 30 years down the line that will change that as well, so I mean.
This, this really is just dealing with the pipes and conveying the sewage to the plant. You know, at some point, the plant's going to be the bottleneck. So this doesn't affect downstream, this goes right to the Southwest Regional Pump Station, so it can handle these additional units. We've checked that out in the overall model of the system. And, you know, this was not included in the 40 million that we would give an additional 15% capacity to the system and the plant. So it's, it's just to give you all a heads up that there, we've looked at it holistically, and we've looked at it kind of in a more granular condition, and we counted the cost, and this is the benefit, 3,724 new connections, and the kind of area it affects. So I'll be bringing you a proposal for engineering services to do these designs unless you all, between now and then, have questions and decide you don't think it's worth doing. It just, it was the best return on investment, when we, we looked at several scenarios, and that's in the table on your cover sheet. This is just the best, the least cost, highest benefit solution per, per connection. You all can call me anytime about this, this is just for information, I'm not needing an action item from you. Just wanted to put this out there, and, and you all can think about it and call me if you need more information.
Sorry, you caught me with the mouthful.
Sorry, we're kidding.
Any questions for, for Darren? Okay, I'm going to do something real quick and move the food distribution permit on number seven up to number five, because Darren and I have the meeting with TDEC today at 11:30, and I think this one is something that we're all wanting to discuss. So we'll move food distribution permit up to number five, and then proceed after that.
Sure.
So in your agenda packet is a draft of, of food sharing services or food distribution ordinance. This is a draft, I'm not asking, we're not asking for any action or vote on it, but it's here for, is presented here as a draft for your discussion and for your input. To give you some background on this, this has been requested by, that we look into this, this concept of, of establishing a structure or program for regulating how public property, city-owned property is used by organizations that want to provide meals to homeless individuals or individuals who are suffering from food insecurity, whether they're homeless or not, and, and then providing other kind of related services. This has been a group effort to get to this point. I've worked on it, obviously Angela Jackson, Sam Huddleston, Karen Lampert, Helen Glenn, Nate Williams, and we've also gotten input from Jeffrey Parker, who, from, who's the executive director of HARC, and he's here today as well, and we've gotten input from other members of HARC. And so this is, this is our initial proposal of a framework that would, tries to balance multiple interests, which is, one, to make public property available for the provision of these types of services to people who are suffering from food insecurity, but while also not placing an undue burden on the general public and without kind of compromising the intended use of various city facilities and properties. So it is a delicate, it's a delicate balance. There are both legal and practical issues that come into play here, but this is, this ordinance is based on other ordinances in other cities. It's, I've kind of taken things from, from various ordinances and tried to put them together, and, but also has some unique things that involve, you know, bringing HARC and having HARC play a role in, in, not really coordinating, but making sure that the people who are providing these services have a, have a general understanding of the various issues and considerations that come into play when serving homeless individuals or individuals who are suffering from food insecurity. So basically, what, what the ordinance does is, it basically says, if you're going to engage in this food sharing activity, that you need to get a permit from the city to do it on public property. This does not affect what happens on private property. If a, if a church, or Salvation Army, or any other, a private property owner wants to conduct a food sharing event on their property, this does not apply. If they want to apply to do this, if someone wanted to, you know, do this, have a food sharing event on, on county property, this would not apply. It just applies to city property. And, and, and when you, when I say city property, that includes the right-of-way, so sidewalks as well. And basically, the, in addition to that, it excludes certain properties from being eligible for, for the issues, and that's specifically the, an area right around Civic Plaza and City Hall because of the, the belief from staff and from, you know, my conversations with many council members, is that holding that, you know, food sharing events in that, that area is inconsistent and incompatible with the intended use of those properties. But, but that there are numerous other alternative locations made available throughout the city for these types of events and activities. You know, park property, other, any other, basically any other city-owned property would be eligible for a permit. And the, the ordinance goes through the permit application procedure, and I think the two, two important things to, to point out here are, one, in terms of trying to ensure food safety, you know, is the food that's being served safe? We don't, as you all know, we don't have a city health department. Also, the, neither Rutherford County Department of Health nor the Tennessee Department of Health require any permit or licensure for this type of activity. So, but one of the, in speaking with individuals at the Rutherford County Department of Health, one of the things that they do offer are food safety training programs, one that's conducted by the Rutherford County Department of Health, and also the Tennessee Department of Health has, recognizes, I think it's four or five online training programs where an individual could get certified in food safety. So what this, one of the things that's necessary to get a permit is to provide evidence that you have completed, that, or that the person who is in charge of the event for an organization has completed one of these trainings, whether that's through Rutherford County Department of Health or through one of these online training programs. And it's my understanding, these online training programs, once you complete them, you get a certificate that you can then, you know, show the evidence that you have completed it. The other thing is, is in terms of coordinating, in an attempt to coordinate in these efforts with other services to individuals who are experiencing income or food insecurity, is that we're, that in order to get a permit, a person who is applying on behalf of an organization, or any person who's applying for a permit, would have to go through, go through a training session conducted by HARC to provide them education about various, you know, considerations that they should be aware of in working with individuals who are, you know, experiencing food insecurity and homelessness. That, part of that is, and, and another additional part of that is, is to try to get people who come to these events, and use those events as a way to get into the larger continuum of care that is coordinated by HARC to help address homelessness in our community. The, the permit process is, would be basically the same, whether it's for park property or non-park property. The only thing that, that would, that would be really different is that, and here there is actually a correction to the ordinance that was, or the draft that was presented to, or included in the agenda. to, or included in the agenda material, is that the, a permit for using park property would go through not the shelter reservation process, but it would go through the department's special use process policy. So that, that's just a change, but they would, an application for this type of permit to have a food sharing event would go through the same process as any other type of special use event on park property. We go through the general rules and regulations on it, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, and there, it includes, you know, enforcement mechanisms of specific grounds on which permits may be denied, and, and specific grounds for revoking a permit once it's been issued, and then also an appeal process, an administrative appeal process. And it's important to, if you, section 1336, which is on page three, it is, it's written specifically this way, that the city shall issue a permit to a person who has applied for a permit pursuant to this article unless, and so it, it's, it really kind of restricts discretion, which is good in this situation, because you want to, you want to ensure that the permits are being issued in a nondiscriminatory way, without regard to the group, or without regard to whether this is, you know, a 200-person, you know, of, you know, a company that's holding a picnic with 200 people, or whether it's a food sharing event. So it's, it's very specific in terms of the grounds for denial. Having said that, I'm available for any questions. Angela, Sam, Karen, Nate, and Jeffrey are all here to answer any questions you might have, and welcome any input that you might have here at this meeting, or, you know, that you might want to email to me afterwards.
Is there any requirement to have some kind of commercial kitchen or kitchen inspections to make sure the food is being prepared in a sanitary fashion?
That, and that's, that's actually one of the issues that, that I discussed with the Rutherford County Department of Health. The only organizations that, my understanding right now is that the only organizations that have, are required to have kitchen inspections right now, and that trigger the state inspection requirement are Salvation Army and Journey Home, because it has to do with how frequently you're serving meals, and, and the nature of the facilities. So under state law, those are, that's what's going to govern that inspection at a commercial kitchen, and we, as a city, we don't have that authority to go in and inspect it. I think, so what I've tried to do is to try to get in, in, to at least have people have training, that they can certify that they've had training on how to prepare food safely.
Do we have a threshold about how many times somebody can feed before it kicks that number in, like Journey Home or Salvation Army? What number kicks that inspection in?
It's written into state law. I could get it to you specifically, but it's, it's a certain number of meals per week, and, and it's, you know, and I can't remember exactly what that number is, but we could, I mean, we could say that if, if it is an organization that is doing this more than X number of times per week, that maybe we could say you need to comply with this requirement.
But if we got the same organization feeding people every single day of the week, at what point does that trigger?
Yeah, that's, and, and that would have to be triggered by, going back to state law, and I, and, in terms of, we would not be in a position where we could conduct the inspections, but we might be in a position of saying if you are providing food in, in a manner that, you know, basically aligns with the state inspection requirement, you need to get, you need to have the certificate.
It'd probably be something as a practical matter, we'd be, if someone kept coming in and asking for permits one right after the other, we'd say, well, wait a minute, you know, it looks like you are getting pretty close here. You need to go and get, you probably need to go get inspected. We don't do the inspect, because we don't do,
We don't do it.
We don't do it, but we, you know, we, we, if they refuse, we may report it to Public Health Department, let them take it over and decide what they want to do on it, or something like that. So, I mean, we, I think we'd become aware of it, because they'd be consistently coming in enough times to.
Does, and that, that leads to a question. Does this mean that, are we giving, like, I want to do this every Tuesday for, you know, or the first Tuesday of every month. So are we granting this for just a day, a particular event, or is this this swath of, I want to do this every week?
This is just one, a permit is for one event. Now, you don't have to go back and redo the, the food safety training, or the training with HARC for every permit.
Right.
But for each time that you want to conduct event.
You need to submit an application for a permit.
Yes, and, and also that there is, there's a limit in terms of the number of, and I'll find it here for you, the number of permits that someone can get in 24, oh, here it is, it's section, bottom of page three. So a permit issued pursuant to this article is valid for a single uninterrupted use not to exceed four consecutive hours, starting at the date and time specified in the permit. The city shall issue only one permit per location within the same 24-hour period, and shall not issue a permit for another public place within 1,000 feet of that location during that same 24-hour period.
Okay. Was there discussion on the idea, because of the inspection process and some of the limitations about that, of just saying it can't be a buffet-style service, it has to be a prepackaged service where it's handed out? And I know that causes other issues, but as we're talking about framing this and providing some structure to that, was there discussion about that, rather than trying to figure out how to overcome, like, a buffet-style service in a parking lot?
We haven't, we haven't discussed that, but that's something that certainly we can take back and, and talk about.
Because that would solve a lot of those problems if you did that.
Yeah.
Are these written certifications that we're asking, are they already in place? I mean, is, does the HARC, Jeff, do they, do y'all already do this?
So we have the training content available. Most likely what we're going to build out is an online platform where these groups would go to take that training, that would include a completion certificate with it, so that they have something that they can hold on to and also provide for record-keeping.
Is the county doing, is that the way the county's?
They, I think what we would do, so the online, my understanding is that the, the online programs that the state Department of Health recognizes, you get that online cert, you get that certification that you can print out in the same way. In Rutherford County, for their safety programs, they don't have something in place, but I think if that's the route we want to go, we can either, you know, create a form letter that the person who is conducting the training could just sign. They don't have to create something, but that person could take the letter and have it signed by, you know, an employee or officer of the, the Rutherford County Department of Health.
Adam, also, I know you, you looked at other ordinances as this was kind of crafted. Talk a little bit about the discussion about a fee for the permit, you know. I know that's going to be set by resolution and not by the ordinance, but talk a little bit about, was that consistent in the other things that you saw? Was there discussion about that, just with it being the type of event that it is, generally speaking?
Sure. So they're basically, they're, in terms of a permit structure, there are a couple of different models. One is the, what, what I'm proposing here, what we're proposing here is that a permit, it's a one-time permit for a one-time event, and that you, there's a fee associated with that permit. Those tend to be, when it's in that situ, that type of structure, the permit fee is lower, you know, 25, $50, something like that. Some of those, I shouldn't say some, a lot of those also have a refundable, so that fee is non-refundable, but also have a refundable deposit to make, to offset any costs that the city might incur if they, if, you know, parks and rec staff, or streets, or any other department has to go back up and clean up after the event. So that's, that's the one structure. The other structure is that basically you get this, you get a permit that is good for a set period of time, for any number with, with, without necessarily a cap on how many events you can hold during a year. But let's say that permit is good for a year, you're certified for a year to conduct these types of events. And then what, what, in this, the example of this is the city of Birmingham, is that if you have that year-long permit, you can go online and reserve a location to conduct the event, and so long as no one has reserved that location for that times, that time slot, you can do it, because you're basically pre-approved to do it. In those instances, the permit, there's not a fee for reserving that space, but the permit fee on the front end is higher. You know, it might be more in the neighborhood of $250 or $500 to get that, to get that, that permit.
Do they still require the deposit?
What was that?
Do they still require deposit on that, or do you?
I would have probably, that there's still, not a deposit for the, I think what it would be structured as, is that you, that included in that fee is kind of the understanding that some of that is going to be covered by, is kind of going to go into a reserve account to offset any, you know, cleanup that is required, but that had, that city's employees have, have to do after the event. There's, there's still a requirement that you could be billed for it, and that you're legally obligated to pay for that, if you don't, you know, if the city has to spend $500 to clean something up, the city can go back and say, this is what we, this is the cost that we incurred. But there, I don't believe, in the instance of the city of Birmingham, Alabama, that there was a requirement that you had to post a non-refundable deposit for each time you were holding a, a, a food sharing event.
I think for the purposes of this, the anticipation is that someone would come in and apply for a permit, we give a permit, there'd be a fee that we either cover or offset the cost of administrative cost handling the permit, and then that would be for that particular time, and that's it. Repeat that process, and if we need a deposit on cleaning, we can decide, you know, what that might be, and in some instances, if it's a, and they're doing a good job of cleaning, then maybe we don't, aren't concerning ourselves with the, it's a cleaning deposit, because the cleaning deposits, you gotta, you know, that's administrative cost as well, to monitor that.
So is this a one-time fee, yearly, one-time yearly fee?
No, this is, this is a per, this is per-permit fee, because, because people are, the applicant is getting a permit for one event.
Yeah, so it'd be.
I mean, they could come in and apply for 12 permits at the same time, you know, the first Sunday, Saturday of every month. They could submit those and, and apply for them.
I thought they couldn't do a certain number within a 24-hour period.
Yeah, but they could do, say, say you wanted to do one every Sunday.
Yeah.
You could come in and apply for those 12 permits for the next three months.
Same day? You had, you can do that, the same day?
You could apply for it, you just can't, you just can't hold the event within a 24-hour period. You know, it, what you're restricting is when you hold the event, not when you apply for it. So you can't, you can't hold an event on Saturday morning and then get a permit for event, an event on Saturday night.
We'd probably take a look at that, because what, we want to, we want to regulate it, but we don't want to add a huge administrative cost, which would go into a permit fee, and I, I would think that it would be better if we did it on event, if you come in and get it for that one event, and then if you want to do another event, you need to come back and do it at another event.
I agree.
Because otherwise, we're, we are putting into an administrative process and increasing the fee for, for doing, trying to figure out, do they have a year, you know, what dates? Does someone else come in and want it on that date? Where are they? I mean, so that adds a lot of complexity to it, which would have to go into the fee for any individual event, if we want to do that.
I was thinking, I mean, you know, if you, what I'm trying to figure out is, okay, well, if we have to have it for individual events, and they can come in and fill out, let's just use four applications for every Tuesday of this month, okay? I'm just, you know, thinking what might be kind of a, you know, they would come in and fill out, you know, are we going to make them fill out four applications to do every Tuesday, and it's still going to be the same net result, if we just had them do one application that said, we want every Tuesday this month? I mean, the net result's the same, is that what you're telling me? If we, then we charge a fee for each separate one?
Maybe, I think administratively, and the fee, if we want to keep the fee low, it'd be better if they filled out one application for one event.
Yeah, I mean, they could, we could do it that, we could do it that way, and I mean, I think we might need to tweak the ordinance a little bit to, to make it clear that, you know.
So, so I would, I mean, you know, to, to me, it seems like what we'd want to restrict is, we'd want to restrict how often they come in and how many permits they request, you know, in a short period of time, but then I'd also be willing to say, well, all right, well, we would make a permit for up to, say, five times or something, you know, I mean, because having somebody come in and fill the same exact paperwork out, 12 different sets of paperwork, or 52 sets of paperwork, because they know they want to come in every Monday for the next year, or every Saturday for the next year, I don't think that, I don't know that that really achieves making sure we're, you know, dispersing, you know, geographically, and making sure we're, you know, keeping somebody from absorbing all of the time at all of the parks, and, you know, I mean, somebody just comes in and fills out 52 forms, and then all of a sudden, you can't get a, a, you know, pavilion at Barfield, because 12 people who happen to go get the one-hour online certification come in there and just book up every one of them for a year. That doesn't seem like where I would want to head with this. So, I mean, I think we, you know, again, I'm trying to do some give and take here, I mean, not that I, not that it's my personal preference, we're trying to figure out logistically give and take of, well, how do we kind of make sure we're not locking up for too long, all, you know, every day, filling out 365 permits all at once, and you got it every day now? I mean, that doesn't seem to make sense for it, to me.
And we would want to manage it.
Yeah, I wouldn't think staff would want to manage it, so I mean.
We don't allow, from Parks and Recreation, I mean, we don't allow one group to come in and dominate. If you've got the same group coming in to lease, you know, we had that issue out on Field Five at, at Sportscom, where we had, you know, a local high school was basically taking over Field Five, and, you know, Murfreesboro Little League couldn't even use Field Five because another group dominated that total field. So, you know, we don't allow that to happen.
Yeah, so I would just say, we need to kind of put that in, if, while we're coming up with stuff on this ordinance.
So what you're thinking would be, one, that, I'm just going to give an example, say you can, you can apply for X number of permits within a 30-day period type thing? Is that, is that what I'm?
Maybe, I mean, I don't know that I've thought, I mean, I'm just sort of brainstorming, I've thought something like that.
Could you make it to where you could come? Couldn't you make it to where you could come up with what a number is that someone could reserve, but once they get to that number, they almost go into a standby list that if no one else comes in to reserve it, then they can use it, but, I mean, you don't want to make it to where, yeah, I mean, it's going to be tough to manage.
Yeah, you know, the difference between a five and ten dollar fee, where you come in, you get a permit, we look and say, nobody else is doing it, okay, fine. And we have to get lists out and do everything else, and you're talking about a fifty, seventy-five dollar fee. That's, you know, and so to me, if, if we wanted to do this and we want to regulate it appropriately and we want to keep the fee as low as possible, we do one event on one application, and then that gets approved or not, and after that event, you can come back and ask for another.
I just want to make one quick comment, well, probably not quick, but, you know, over the last two weeks, I made just a quick note. I think it's an overall discussion that we need to have, that, you know, I think we are all want to be sympathetic with, like, the groups that came and spoke to us on our public comment section, especially with what the professionals that HARC's doing. You know, it's a tough situation for us as elected officials to make decisions on, because, I mean, none, none of us want to say that we don't want people feeding the homeless, the poor that need help. I, I mean, I don't want to say that, but at the same point, you know, we're taught, teach a man to fish is a whole lot better than looking at what the overall goal is of just having the same group come in every single day to get food. So I think we have to somehow have the overall discussion that, you know, the Discovery Center had someone overdose on their front steps last, week before last. They had a homeless person come off of the boardwalk with a taser and threaten not only patrons but kids at an event. We have NHC employees who consistently are contacting us to where they don't feel safe walking to their car downtown. So now NHC has even approached about possibly buying our parking lot that we don't use to hope, to totally fence in that area so their people can get to their cars. And so the way I look at that as an elected official, when we have not only constituents but employees that are telling us that they don't feel safe, then we're on notice that if something happens and we didn't do something about it, we knew. So then we've got out in Old Fort Parkway and behind Agri Park Drive, behind the Rite Aid, on Dr. Saraswati and, I can't, Mr. Carey's property, an entire camp that was built on private property, we tell them that they need to put signs out and go paint their curves purple. The private owner does that. The groups take the signs down, paint over the purple thing, the purple paint that we told them to put out, and then we can't get them off their property, on private property. Then the last three days, we've got complaints from St. Clair Senior Citizens people that there's someone who's put a mattress and a tent out on the church parking lot across the street and literally living in the parking lot for the last three days, and that they're being threatened, and threatened. And then we've got, and this is just to name a few, we've got Cannonsburg behind the Dodge Store that used to be one of the most traffic Greenway areas that we have, and now our constituents are telling us that they don't feel comfortable going to Cannonsburg in that section of the Greenway because it's not safe. So I understand what we're trying to do for feeding, but we're going to have to have an overall discussion on, you know, what, what's acceptable. Not to mention, I went on Monday to the new Allen Chapel Benevolent Cemetery that, you know, just had the naming on Monday, and under the bridge, they're having issues with people coming on to the cemetery. So, and I'm not trying to sound heartless, but, you know, I don't want Murphysboro to turn into San Francisco and Austin where you can't even walk down the sidewalks. And so we've got to come up with some kind of overall plan that just giving somebody food is not helping the overall situation. I think HARC is helping, Greenway's helping, Journey Home's helping, but just someone who's coming out every afternoon and bringing people downtown, and I appreciate Ms. Carolyn and that group that's doing that, but they're leaving and they are cleaning up, and they're doing a great job.
Yeah.
But we're left to deal with everything else, and I'm not saying we're left to deal with it, Discovery Center's left to deal with it, NHC's left to deal with it, and someone's going to get hurt, and we didn't do anything. So that, that's just my overall concerns, that, I mean, Kirk with Garage Bar, that we all know Kirk Garrett, that the ladies who are coming in and out are consistently complaining that they feel unsafe. So I don't know what we need to do with the police, but something, we're going to have to be more aggressive, in my opinion, to at least take care of the overall resident and constituent.
Yeah. Well, with the, since you mentioned the police, I've talked to the chief, we're putting together a homeless task force that will be assigned specifically to addressing law enforcement issues regarding homelessness and engaging with who they know are out there that are problematic or potentially problematic. So that's being done now, and, you know, it's a matter of getting the resources, putting the people into it, and the scheduling it, so that's underway.
I think we, this issue's been something that our community's dealt with for decades, quite honestly. And I, I think what you're talking about, Mayor, is, is some type of community discussion. And I know with an ordinance change, we'd have a public hearing, I'm assuming?
No, there's no public hearing required.
Well, if that doesn't trigger a public hearing, we ought to public, we ought to have a, trigger a public hearing.
Also, based on your recommendation, Angela is setting up a, I think it's December the, what was the date? December the sixth, Angela has set up with HARC, and Bill, that was Bill's suggestion. So that's coming, Bill.
Okay, well, because that broader issue is, we have all the resources, we have a lot of people that are doing work, doing fine work, but the reason that HARC got started was cooperating and informing everybody so that they're not duplication of services, and we're actually moving towards accomplishing something that's meaningful and sustainable for our community. So hopefully that will have, and, and I'd like to see their reaction, the people that are getting together, their reaction to this ordinance change, what they see, because it's hard for us to read into all the nuances of what this could mean, because if we're not out there handing out sandwiches, we don't really know some of the issues. But there's lots of resources and wisdom and experience that's in our community, we just need to get face-to-face and have a general discussion about all these issues, because, I mean, I get to hear about it a lot, not just, we haven't mentioned the one place in our community that deals with this on a daily basis. And, but, but they deal with it on a daily basis, and, and there's some threat to the quality of life of our community when people don't feel safe to go to certain venues in our community. We've got a huge investment to protect as well. But the answers are not, you know, it's not a silver bullet, there's not one thing we can do, it's all of us working together and knowing what each of us, what piece of that each of us are doing. And I, I really think that's what's needed at this point.
And Bill, what, Bill's not going to say it because he's too, Bill is too generous with, you know, what Bill's talking about is, you know, the library has turned into, you know, basically during the day, it's a day homeless shelter, and Bill's team is dealing, or Rita's team is dealing with that daily. And, you know, Carol has been over to the city non-stop asking for help, and we don't know what help to give. So I think that's a discussion that we've got to, you know, we've got to work on too, because all of us have heard, you know, moms and kids don't want to go into the library anymore. And, you know, so we're, as a city, we'll spend a million-plus dollars this year on, on mutual aid for the library, plus the county giving another million, not to count everything else, that we've got to come somehow figure, you know, figure that out as well. And again, it's tough discussions that we have to have, and I hope, you know, from HARC, my standpoint, I hope you know I'm not trying to be, I don't want anyone to think that we're not being sympathetic, but at the same point, you know, if we have a patron come into a soccer match that we feel is a threat to kids, then we immediately deal with that. I mean, Bill's seen that for years at baseball games, when we think a parent is a danger not only to kids but their parents, and we have to be able to take that same measure with people who are going to be around kids and be around our staff. So it's really an overall discussion, and hopefully December sixth, that can start with the overall discussion on how we, how we help that.
And to you, if I could just pick back on something?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
To, to, to the mayor's point, the, the re, the primary reason why this ordinance would prohibit and not allow permits to be issued for these events within a quarter-mile of Civic Plaza is because those events interfere with the intended use of the library. They make it more difficult to achieve, for the library and library staff to achieve, you know, what their mission is. So that's.
Well, the reality is, we, you know, look, it's not like every single person who's going to come and need to get food is any kind of danger, but we also know the reality is, you can look at the newspaper and look at the number of violent crimes and stuff like that, that come from a population that might be similar to the ones that are over by Allen Chapel, and that's just, that's just real. I mean, there's no, you know, there's just some, you read it in the news enough to know, it just kind of happens that way. I think we may need to be careful about anywhere where there's children regularly, as far as where our sites are, that might be, you know, adjacent to the school. I mean, I hate to say it that way, but I think that's the reality of it. We know there's a lot of addiction issues, which lead to bad decisions and, and, you know, mad decisions sometimes too. But anyway, I had a couple more specific questions.
Sure.
One of them is, in, in this, in, in our ordinance, you know, talking about the training certificate by the person that's kind of in charge of that organization, so to speak, it might be a good idea for us to, to require that person or the certificate holder to be present at the event.
Okay.
I'm bringing that up for discussion, I just think if that's the person who has gone through the training, it, it, yeah, okay, they may be the leader of the organization, they went through and got it, but then they send somebody else who has no idea what to look for out to, to be at the event, that that, that a person with a certificate may need to be present.
Yep.
And then another part is, you know, when we look at, you know, I, I don't want to belabor this issue too much, and I, I think it is something that we obviously need to be addressing, and I'm glad that we are addressing it and talking about it. The application for the permit, I think, is going to be the holder of a lot of the details, you know, here, right? I mean, how, because that'll kind of be more of a summary, and, and so like, to me, thinking about the application, you know, maybe something that we add in there, you know, obviously it's like a hold harmless.
Yep.
Some type of hold harmless for the city.
Yep.
We're allowing this on city property, that we need to make sure we're not liable for if anything does go bad, i.e. a bad batch of food or, you know, whatever, that they've got some either bond or insurance or something that's going to cover that. I, I don't know the right way to protect, but it seems like we, we may need to. You may say, no, 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 legally, we're fine, and I'll, I'll accept that, but it's the way my brain works, so.
You raise a good point.
Make sure we're looking at that.
Never heard.
And so also perhaps in that application, you know, is an affidavit, you know, that that certificate holder is signing that says, we will ensure that the proper inspection steps have been taken, or that, that, you know, that we will, we will abide by the state law, or some kind of, some kind of signature saying, yes, we're going to make sure, and, and, you know, look, man, I, you know, there, the health, health departments in this country exist for a reason, and nobody's going to knowingly, I don't think, come out and bring bad food to a place, you know, knowingly, but, you know, when you're doing that, anytime you move food around, it creates danger, bacterial, and, you know, those kinds of dangers, I don't mean, I mean, just, you know, it creates an opportunity for more risk as it relates to food. You guys might notice I missed a day last week, so this is a little sensitive to me, this is more sensitive to me now than ever, or two weeks ago, for this exact reason, so, but, you know, those kinds of things, maybe we can plug into the application that then have, we then have a way to go back and kind of say, okay, wait a minute now, you know, I know you see you got the compliance, but you, you signed this saying that you were going to make sure, we noticed you've, you know, requested this sixteen times, which may put you in that threshold, and we're fine, you know, how are you complying with the state?
That's fair.
I know, but some kind of affidavit, some kind of hold harmless was just things that came into my mind.
Adam, Craig, in, in like what Bill was talking about, I mean, maybe the discussion as a council that we need to have is, you know, what, what are or were the intended uses of our facilities that, when they were built, or we had the discussion, like the library, you know, what is the, what is the overall intended use of the library supposed to be? Or what's the intended use of a park property? I mean, if we want, for example, Barfield or Sportscom over here, the pavilion next to Sportscom, did we intend for that to be a mass feeding site?
Right.
And so that's really, I think, the overall discussion with the council is to start saying, you know, I, I assume we wouldn't allow Oakland to come out here and run wind sprints on our mile-long runway out here, because it's a mile and that's easy for the Oakland football team to come out here and run on our airport. So what's the intended use of our facilities that we have? And then that can start the discussion as a council, okay, do we want to vary from those intended uses of what we have? And then if the council clearly says, okay, look, we, we intended Sportscom to be five baseball fields that would be used for baseball field, but we don't want to allow people to practice on those fields that are for soccer, then we can start having that discussion on what the intended use of those facilities needs to be. And maybe that's what we, we talk on December sixth about the intended areas that we have downtown, what's the intended use down there? And, and coupling with that, helping those groups that want to feed find an area that would be good for that intended use. So that way, it can work all the way around, that if, you know, the groups that want to feed in the afternoons, we find good areas that would work for those uses, that would not put them near children or employees who are working to work, or walking back from work, and then we, we help accommodate everyone.
Yeah, I'll, I'll say that that's actually, we, we started out with that model, trying, staff trying to identify specific properties that, where, where these events could be held, and it became very complicated because just about every property the city has has an intended use, that it, that its primary initial intended use was not for holding this type of event. And so, and that was the model that the city of Birmingham, Alabama adopted. They had three, in their ordinance, they say there are three specific locations when the, within the city where these events could be, be held. And other cities have followed that model. If, so that is an option. If we can decide that we, there are two, three, whatever number of locations within the city, that this is where we want to designate for these loc, these events to take place, we, we can, we can, we can use that model, that's a viable option. The problem is, is I think that as staff, we were having difficulty coming up with which properties to use.
Is, I mean, is that because none of them seem like the right place, or is that because all of them seem like the right place? I mean, I think it's closer to, to one of those than the other, if I had to guess, but I think that accentuates the problem that we're talking about here, right?
You could say, you could say that there are, you know, a lot of it was that, you know, this was not, it was, it was, it was both. You know, it was, you could make an argument that, you know, a park pavilion is not in a park where there's a playground, and there's, is not the right place to hold this event. You know, someone could make that argument. But someone could also make an argument that a park pavilion is, you know, at the right time of day, is the right place to hold this event, if it's centrally located, and, and then you don't have, you don't have a really good basis for discriminating between this type of event and, you know, a, a church picnic that has two-hundred people. So, so the answer to your question is yes and yes.
Madeline.
Angela, your group, your committee did a fabulous job, opened a leeway for this discussion, you all did a fabulous job, and continue to do that. discussion. You all did a fabulous job, and continue to do that, you know, we'll get it all together. Yeah, the homeless is a very big growing problem, but we have to be careful and not put all of them in the same boat, like all of them are terrible people. Uh, two things happened to me within the last six months. One of my good friend's daughter got married, and they wanted to go, well, they did go, the whole wedding party down here to City Hall for the fountain, to take pictures, where they couldn't take pictures 'cause the homeless was in there taking a bath, and that just shocked me. I mean, no clothes on, taking a bath. I mean, I was shocked, but the policeman told me, he said, "We have this all the time." But one thing that really got me, a lady called me, and she said, "Can you come to your funeral home?" And I said, "Yeah." She found a lady on the corner with a purse, the same lady whose daughter was getting married, a homeless lady had a purse, and she said, "That's the purse I've been looking for." She had ordered her bridesmaids purses with their names on it, where the lady had a name on it. So they called me, and then the lady, homeless lady, had stolen it off this lady's porch, and she said that I gave her permission to live at the funeral home. And so I go there, and this lady is camped out behind our funeral home, and the whole box with all the rest of the purses are back there. She had a mattress, and see, that's a place you don't really police a lot of, funeral homes, 'cause you just go there when you need to. But now they have come to our funeral home. I mean, this lady had a nice little camp back there. Uh, but she, I, I said, "How don't we find her in the daytime?" Well, she packs up, and they move the little stuff, then they come back at night. So, yeah, they're going now to places that they would never have gone to, and they're still, yeah. So it, it's a problem. We have a big problem. We have a big problem, and we won't solve it overnight.
The, the ironic thing is that we're, you know, we try to talk to the private sector to work on, you know, a private-public partnership, but the private sector is very apprehensive to have that happen on their property, because they don't want the liability. And then they're like, "Hey, well, just put it on city property," and they want us to assume the liability. So no one wants to assume the liability, which in turn means there's no place for everybody to get, somebody to go. So maybe the thing that we do is to find, like last Call for Grace feeds behind Sandy's truck stop, right in between the truck stop and Mytec, because the owners of the Regal Inn won't let them come onto the Regal Inn property to feed. So that's another issue. But maybe we try to find at this meeting on the 6th, identify some properties that the private sector has that will allow, if we don't have any intended use for the city, that will allow some of the feeding to go place, or happen, and maybe there's some kind of indemnification agreement that, you know, they can, the private sector can get signed off, that will allow that to happen on property that we don't own. And that, I mean, that maybe that's the, and we allow that to be permitted, not just on city property, but on private property. So, I mean, may, maybe that's a discussion, but. All right, Adam, have you got a good, good feedback?
Yeah, this has been extremely helpful. I appreciate everyone's comments and input, and, you know, we'll, um, I will circle up with the staff and prepare, you know, incorporate some of your comments, and get that out to people, so you can have it in advance of the, the December 6th meeting.
The council members, just, just so you know, on that, um, on the email that we got from the Discovery Center, Nate, I think, is working on this with the police on finding a way to, the access points that come off of Church Street, um, to close some of those access points off to where the boardwalk is not being used as, you know, I don't know if you've walked on that boardwalk before, but it's not like a lot of our Greenway boardwalks where it's more open. It's definitely an enclosed area. So they're, they're concerned with that, and they're working on that and securing their, their playground. So they're coming back, I think, Monday to meet, meet with us again, but, um, staff's been really good on, on working on that, and I think Tara and their chairman also feel comfortable that the city's trying to help address it, so.
Can I ask a quick question on the December 6th meeting? Who went, where is it, at what time?
Send an invite after this meeting.
Alrighty. Um, and, and that is not gonna be an official necessarily city meeting, that's just gonna be kind of a community meeting that. And I, I, while you're walking up there, I'll ask the follow-up question, which is kinda for Adam's purposes, for what we're saying here as far as feedback goes. The December 6th meeting, what, what, I, I think we need to have a little bit of a process as far as expectation. I mean, you're mentioning the December 6th meeting, are you already taking information that we talked about here? You're talking about putting it back into a new ordinance and having that ready by the 6th, or you are talking about taking what we hear here, taking what happens at the 6th meeting, which is not really our meeting, and then recrafting, or?
I thought, I thought I could do it either way. I thought that I would take input that I've received here, and, and incorporate that into a new draft, not something that you're gonna be voting on, on the 6th.
Right.
But a new working document, um, that can be, that can be available, you know, if we wanna make it available to the public to, so that they can look at it, and it can be a topic of discussion at the meeting, we can do that. Um, but it wasn't, but, but I see it as an iterative process where, you know, based on what people say on the 6th, there might be another round of revisions.
So for the, yeah, for the What It's Worth column, I think I'd not be in favor of pushing out a new ordinance based on our discussion here to, to, to consider on the 6th, or, or in any way act like that has anything to do with the meeting that's on the 6th, because it's not our meeting. I, I think that we might also glean some stuff that we wanna come back anyway from the 6th, and at that point, maybe we bring the information back. I mean, like, I'm trying to think right now in my head, I'm not sure I understand enough about all of this, what's in the ordinance, to say this, but I'm trying to figure out in my head, sort of, what are our decision points, right? I mean, like, from a council perspective, I mean, are we, based on what we talked about today, for example, do, do we need to give you guidance on whether or not we wanna pick two or three places?
No, you don't need to tell me that today.
I mean, I think I would tell you that today, like, me personally, just from a standpoint of saying, if that's something that we're trying to give you feedback on, I think that's a pretty big factor. I just don't know what all those factors are. I mean, if this ordinance says every single property is available that the city owns, is that what the current thing says?
Yeah.
I probably would say that needs to be different to me, okay? I mean, if Birmingham has three, and that's all working out, I don't know that we have to have every single property available, especially with those intended use discussions that are still yet to come, okay?
Okay.
But, so, I, maybe help us in the meantime, between now and the 6th, and so that we're prepared shortly after the 6th, some of those, what we think are the bigger picture decision points, so that we can really give you guidance after the 6th, to say, "Hey, look, we wanna kinda go this direction or this direction." Is it every place, or is it a limited number of places, and then which places is it, and then, you know, whatever those decision points look like. And Angela, I'm, I'm sorry, man, I, there was no quick way to say that.
Well, I, I, it's funny, because I have several answers to, that, that I'd like to throw out. I think, first of all, um, some of the original goals in that, um, in that idea and direction for that meeting on the 6th is, is very separate from determining city management decisions, but instead, um, working with some of our partners, looking to bring in, um, different agencies and different community representatives to discuss more in a panel forum, um, the challenges and, um, um, opportunities that we have to work together, um, bringing in, uh, Mr. Parker and Hark to help facilitate some of those conversations, some representatives from our service providers, and then also some representatives from some folks to discuss community impact, and some solutions that, well, solution-based discussion that we can have together. So really, um, more of that control piece. Ms. Lampert has worked extensively in setting that up, and has issued some preliminary invitations. Uh, we wanted to wait until after this meeting, um, before we sent that invitation out, but yes, rather than a council-led discussion, um, we will invite the council, of course, to come and listen and participate however you'd like to, but the focus being more on that community impact, um, input, uh, of, of stakeholders is, is how we have framed that discussion.
Time and location again.
Sorry?
Time and location.
Um, location here, January 6th at.
December 6th.
I'm sorry, December 6th at.
It's a airport commission meeting that night.
1:30 to 3:00.
And by the way, just for legal purposes.
What, what time is your meeting?
I think so, 1:30 to 3:00.
Wow, okay.
So it's 4:30 to 4:30.
So, so the goal with that was not, is not, you know, sometimes we do public input meetings where the goal is to invite as many people as possible. We can do that in, in a, um, oh, this is fine, dance and music.
It's, yeah.
Sir.
Chad.
Is that your phone?
It's not mine.
Sure it is. You, you played that off pretty well, huh? Somebody's playing music around here.
I actually don't see a phone here either. Chad just thinks our mu, our, our time is up.
That's the, uh, that's the Oscars, you know, they're whisking you off the stage.
With that being said, we have not sent out anything formal and, and, and still are, are open. Dance and music, Chad. Oh, there it goes.
And that's a, a.
Legally speaking, too, just, we, we, we probably, you, you said we would be there and participate however we like. Do we need to probably not participate?
If the, if the meeting is advertised, um, which I think, uh, or, they, this is what I would say, if it's, if it's not advertised, you are welcome to attend and listen, but I, but I would say, you know, it's not for, it's not for you, y'all to deliberate.
It might go a lot farther if y'all shut me up, you know. It might go a lot faster.
That's what I was thinking.
So don't advertise it.
So, 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 oh, we have publicly advertised opportunities for public comment. We have those on a regular basis that are, that are open for participation. Um, the goal of this was a, a smaller, um, working meeting, a stakeholders' meeting.
Yeah. Um, and I don't know if, so that, that, December 6th is a Monday, you know, currently we have a workshop scheduled on the 8th. Um, I'm not sure that, that it would be, you know, depending what I have, what we have going on between, on, on Tuesday, the 7th, we might be able to circle back with some revisions on the 8th, but it might be, um, it might be something that we, certainly by the 16th, at the regular meeting, uh, December 16th, we could come back with, you know, um, an updated version of the ordinance that kind of incorporates, um, the, uh, comments of members of council, as well as some of the public comments from this, uh, from the meeting on the 6th.
And, and let me add, if I could, I think part of that separation that you mentioned, Rick, uh, between this meeting, this discussion, and, and other things, um, the, the ordinance that, that Mr. Tucker presented is, is about food sharing. I think the broader discussion of, um, folks with food insecurities, with shelter, um, needs, with, with all of those things, bringing those conversations, um, they're two separate focuses there, um, even though they are absolutely intertwined. The food sharing component, part of the discussion and the intention of rather than this being just a straight city function, but instead working with our partners and involving Hark, is to provide those connections and those wraparound services. So if we can work with these groups to make sure that they're aware of, of, yes, there is food sharing happening here, but also here are connections, so that our local organizations can have that coalition, and can have that cooperative laying, layering, and, and helping the folks that attend, that'd be very helpful as well.
Yeah. Yeah. Did, just to echo what Angela just said, the purpose of this origin, of this ordinance is very much related to the larger issues, but it's how to, to balance the, the food sharing with, you know, protecting and, um, the intended use of city property and facilities.
Thank you.
Okay. We're ready for number five. Speed Cushion Pilot Program Report.
Okay, um, the Engineering Department developed a traffic calming manual back in 2017, and the Alexander Boulevard residents submitted an application and a petition in 2019. They did the evaluation, and they scored a 48. On the evaluation form, it requires a minimum of 40 to qualify. Um, the, we went through the process and designed bike lanes on the Alexander Boulevard, but H, but the subdivision doesn't have an HOA, and so they weren't able to come up with the 30% funding required, so the project just stalled. Um, in late 2020, council wanted us to test speed cushions, so because Alexander had already qualified for the program, we went ahead and installed the cushions on Alexander in February of 2021. Then in July of 2021, we sent out the surveys to residents to collect their feedback, um, and then we also went back out and collected traffic data. So this is the, um, volumes on Alexander pre-speed cushions and post-speed cushions. As you can see, the volumes greatly decreased, um, indicating that people were avoiding the areas with the speed cushions. The news is, also, the speeds decreased, so, um.
Yes.
That was the, um, what the cushions were put there for, so. Um, then we also got, from the surveys, we sent out 280, and we got about 120 responses. So two-thirds of the residents that responded said that the, that they thought the pilot, pilot program was excellent or great. There was almost an even split between the presi, people that responded that actually lived on Alexander versus just in the area. Um, then, more than half of the people felt that the cushions are, are effective, and the most residents didn't feel that noise was an issue, and two-thirds of the residents said that they feel like the cushions should stay. And all those responses, and we also give room for the residents to, um, write a response, and all those responses were included in the packets that y'all received with the, uh, agenda today. A couple of the responses were, um, concerned about emergency response, a delay in emergency response times. So, um, I contacted Fire Station Number 6, and we did a ride-along. So we, um, did two passes down Alexander. We did one where we straddled the cushions, and then we did one where at least one wheel, or one wheel hit each speed cushion as we went down. So the first pass, it took a minute and 15 seconds, which equals about 33.6 miles per hour. The second pass, when we hit it with one wheel on, on, one wheel, it took 1:45, which equals about 24 miles per hour. So, um, if we wanna continue using speed cushions in the, on city streets, there's some changes in the manual that we've thought we should, um, recommend, based on the things that we've learned on the pilot program. So right now, the current manual says that only ro, local roads qualify. We suggest adding residential sub-collectors and residential collectors to be allowed for consideration. The current program also has a step where a ballot, a neighborhood meeting and a ballot is, um, done, where 60% of the residents have to vote in favor of the traffic calming method. We're proposing to eliminate this step, and just increasing the initial buy-in of 10% on the petition to 30%. And also, on the evaluation form, there's six criteria. The first one is speed, and it's, um, up to 30 points can be gained by speed, and the current one has 10 points for speed exceeding this posted mile by two miles an hour, and five points for every additional two aisles. The, we propose changing it, the initial 10 points to be for four miles over this posted speed limit, so 34 miles an hour would be 10 points, 36 would be 15, 38 would be 20, and 40 would be 25, 42 or more would be 30 points. Remember, they only need 10 points to, or 40 points to qualify for this. The next one is volume, and you can get up to 25 points for that. The current, um, program is. The current, um, program is assigned for daily volumes of 200. You get 10 points and then another point for every additional 100. We're proposing to reduce that initial points to 5 instead of 10. Crashes, um, is next, and you can get up to 15 points. We propose to change, add the language to include crashes that had, could have been prevented by lower speeds. An example of why we're proposing this is, um, we had a crash due to someone backing up at a stop sign because they decided to, to go a different direction, and they hit the car behind them. So speed cushions would not have had any effect on that circumstances. So we'd like to be able to throw out those kind of crashes. Um, the other three criteria would remain the same, and there are 5 points assigned for school crossings on the project street, um, up to 10 points, and then 5 points assigned for each public facility such as parks, community centers, and high schools. Commercial uses that generate significant number of pedestrians, you can get up to 10 points for that one. Then 5 points if there's no continuous sidewalk on one side, and 10 points if it's missing from both sides. Like I said, it takes 40 points to qualify for the traffic calming. Um, another thing we'd like to propose is to remove the res, the funding requirements from the residents or HOA, and so make this a city-funded project. And then we'd also like to make it so that the projects are selected every March. They can apply all year long, but every March we evaluate them and select the projects that would be, that we could work it into the budget to fund them. Any questions?
Any questions or comments?
Now, I would just make the comment, I appreciate, you know, this kind of started from scratch, you know, with, 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 with us and just kind of in our heads, and you guys have, uh, I feel like you've done a great job, and the people who've had, you know, we've had a lot of people ask questions about it. I've certainly got lots of emails and calls and conversations, and I just feel really confident and, and, and good about the way you guys have handled the whole pilot program and the whole, you know, the deal on Alexander. I mean, I, you know, for what it's worth, Tom, I just appreciate it, and I just feel really good about the way it's all been handled. So, thanks, and I'm good with whatever suggestions y'all make.
Just make a general comment. I, I think, uh, obviously, not everyone thinks these are great. We're never gonna get 100% buy-in, you know, from, from everyone. Um, one of the things that does concern me about this is moving it from the neighborhood streets to the, to the broader streets that we're talking about. Um, so I, I'm a little worried about what that could look like, you know, 20, 25 years from now, and having these spread out all over the community. That's just a comment. That, that may not happen.
What are, though? I mean, you, you, you said the, the, y'all's fancy name for it. Give me, I mean, a, a neighborhood collector.
So, um, right now, we have 10 petitions that have been filed, that are complete. So they're ready to be, or we've actually done studies on most of these. So they are Savannah Ridge, which is a residential sub-collector. So under the current program, it would not qualify.
That's just, that's like Savannah Ridge Drive, right?
Yes.
They just go straight back to it?
Yes. And then another one is Breckenridge Drive. It is a residential sub-collector, and that is from Sulfur Springs to Thompson Lane. Um, so they would, under the current program, they would not qualify. The next three are local, which is Haynes Haven, Hero's Lane, and Aberdeen Circle. All three of those are local, so they would qualify. Kingdom Drive has also made a petition, and they are a residential sub-collector. Um, Weston Boulevard is a local road. Racket Club Drive, they're a residential collector. So again, they wouldn't qualify. Then, um, there's, um, over there on Splash Place, that neighborhood, over there, they're all local roads. They've listed four or five roads that they are interested in, and then Empire is a local road. So of the 10, four would not qualify based on their road classification.
Well, and, and one other comment, too. Uh, and, and I don't know, of course, this is so new, we don't have a long track record of, of working through some of these things, but I do think it is, um, would be really challenging for planning commissions specifically long-term, because one of the things I've seen since we've started talking about this program, uh, is, had been, speed cushions being a part of planning commission discussions. You know, I, I think that's challenging for staff. I think that's very difficult as a negotiation tool when folks are trying to do things in planning commission. So just gonna make a general comment. I don't think we, in the planning commission, need to be talking about where speed cushions are appropriate or not appropriate as we're looking for, um, making a happy place to compromise. I think that needs to be left to staff and not a negotiating point in planning commission, because I think it causes problems. But that comment's for staff.
Well, and I think we did, we did the same thing at, uh, the council level on Oakhaven.
And for us to, so I'm sorry, I would mention us to.
That's only what I remember.
Yeah, I think that is. And I, actually, I think it's a good point, and part of what I, you know, like, part of what I was talking about in my comments is really that, you know, the fact that there is a process in place, you know, that is, hey, wait, we gotta go measure it, we gotta see what these things look like, um, I think absolutely is the right thing to do, it, to, to say, well, look, you know, if, if, if this thing builds out, and the petition gets signed, and, and you score 40 points, then you go on the list. But at the planning level, you can't possibly prove that there's gonna be a 40.
Well, I think the, the reason why it came up at Oakhaven was the developer didn't want Oakhaven extended, the neighbors didn't want Oakhaven extended, the city did, and as a compromise to help everybody get happy.
I think it made sense.
Speed cushions came up.
I think there are a lot of instances that can come up.
Yeah.
Gets real easy to kind of say, well, let's just do this.
Right.
As an outlet for the people that are making the decision, so. And actually, I think that's wise, a wise comment. I mean, that we ought somehow, if there's something, if there is an ordinance for this or whatever, that, you know, we all can sit here and just say, we agree that we're not gonna talk about it, and, and that it needs to go through this process. But if there is something, if there's some ordinance that manages this, or whatever it is, or a resolution, maybe we put it in a resolution that says, this is gonna be the process, it's gonna go through this, and that's the way.
Traffic calming is, um, brought up, mentioned in both the design guidelines and in the subdivision regulations. It's just that speed cushions were never approved form of traffic calming, so like raised intersections, um, road narrowing. That's why we proposed bike lanes at first for Alexander, because it narrows the road and makes people feel like they don't have as much room so that they slow down. So those were approved methods before, and it's just that speed cushions have not been approved for use prior to this. And so I guess the question is, do we want to continue using speed cushions, and do we want to make those changes to the manual to, from the things that we learned on the program?
I'm a yes, I'm a yes. I'm, uh, do we need to?
I'll bet it's case by case.
Uh, do I want to see speed cushions all over our city? No.
I don't.
I don't either. Just gonna be honest with you. No, I get, I, I'm with it, too.
That's why I'm saying bring it back in March, and so it'd be a budgeting thing, and we'd have the list of the people that made petitions and the scores they got, and then we could present it to council at the budget and say, okay, how many of these do we want to fund? And so that way, it's, it comes back, and it's not us just saying, we're gonna spend $10 million on speed cushions this year, and...
I do think another thing, too, and I'm sure staff has thought about this, but, um, I, I think whatever criteria we have decided, and I think, from my personal opinion, it should be a more stringent, harder test to get speed cushions. It shouldn't be easy, it should be difficult. But the other piece of that is making sure that whatever criteria we come up with to say, this is the standard that we think is acceptable, to make sure that from a planning process, we're not creating more of those issues as projects come through. I'm sure that's not happening, but whatever we're fixing with the speed cushions needs to be a template for what we're not allowing to come through planning.
Good point.
My, my two cents.
Any other comments? Thank you so much. You did a great job.
Thank you.
We're gonna do number 6 now, discuss that. Employee handbook reinstatement?
Um, yeah, I wanted to introduce it, and then we can talk about how best to, to handle. Um, council adopts policies a little at a time, one at a time. The effect of that is, don't realize kind of the ultimate result of it. This is our handbook for employees. Double-sided pages stuck in there. Um, not good for employees as far as something that they can work with easily. Uh, and so, if I'm undertaking a project to rewrite this handbook and restate it, uh, not make necessarily changes to what's in there, but to restate them in a fashion and consolidate them into really six different policies and six different administrative directives that, uh, really turns out to be something like this, that much easier for employees to, to use and to access and to get information about what their employment, you know, their employment situation eat them. So, um, because it's a large project, um, you know, there's six of these, and I thought about, well, let's just maybe, if the council, and it's, it's up to council, there's a range of things. We could say, let's approve everything, and you've, you, I sent you the, an email that had really the, the new policy book, draft policy book, and a draft administrative directives, because we'll, we're still continuing to go through some of those. But we could bring those wholesale to council and have them approved, and then, and then move on. Uh, we could take them one at a time during each workshop, but there's questions about that, and we'd be done, you know, in about six months. Um, but that's, that's really where we're at. Hopefully, you've had a chance to kind of look at the general concept of what we're trying to accomplish, uh, and what was sent out earlier by email. Uh, so I'm happy to take any questions we have, particularly questions on the first policy and the changes to it. Um, I, I sent you out the policy and the directive together, and then all of the policies that are consolidated into that, you know, in PDF, and, and some instructions on how to work that, so hopefully that was helpful. Um, and we can talk about that to the extent that council wants to. Um, or, like I said, we can, we can really move on, uh, and bring this to council when it gets, uh, final draft, gets done, and bring it to council to approve wholesale into something that's used. So council will adopt the policy-level decisions, so those that are a policy. Uh, when those need to get changed, and we can bring it to council and get changed. Then there's a set of directives, which is really more how things are done, uh, at the administrative level, and those we can change when we need to change those. Uh, as long as they're consistent with the policy, we can change those. And then we'll have an employee services manual that has forms in it, things that people fill out one or two times. And the other manual, it's, as I mentioned in the email that you got earlier, the other manual's a safety manual. We've really already moved off into a safety manual that, that, uh, we update continually to make sure that that's, that's in use. So that was part of this, and now it's, it's separated out. We'll keep using that so that employees in positions that those apply to will have a, a, a manual that they can use. Any questions or any thoughts, or I'll take, uh, direction on how you want to handle this. We can, like I said, divide it up into six different sessions if you want to get deep into it, or we can take two at a time, three at a time, all at once, whatever council wants to.
Is that really the employee handbook?
This, this right here? This is the employee handbook, right now. As it sits today, this is the employee handbook. Like I said, it's double-sided, so a single-sided would be twice as big.
It was, it was hard to memorize, man.
It's a hundred and sixty. Adam knows it.
It took me like, a week.
We seriously want to, uh, condense that down to not with that little white thing you have, the white all around.
Well, half of this, because, well, not half, less than half of this. From a policy standpoint, it can be condensed to six policies with two sub-policies. It makes sense. So I guess eight policies. It can be condensed into this from a policy standpoint. And then you have the administrative director, which takes some of this out, and this is the administrative manual, and that has, like I said, that's, that's the more, probably when you look at a policy, I would say if you get a policy that you're asked to pass, you'll, you'll hit a section, it's like, well, whatever. I mean, you guys figure out what you want to do. That's the how, you know, the steps that you do it, and it's probably not a council level decision, because, you know, the policy is incorporated usually in the front end and the, the last part of the, the policy has all this administrative stuff. So that would go into the administrative directives, and like I said, we can keep that up to date as we change systems or change processes. That can be easily kept up to date. Part of the problem with this book is to update it requires you to go through the entire process to bring it back to council for council approval, and a lot of times, people would say, well, it's a small change, we don't need to do that, we'll just keep going. And then incrementally, that happens a lot of times, and then you have a policy that's not in compliance because it was, the process to update it was so arduous that it wasn't really worth the small steps. We do it on an administrative level, we can do that really fast, keep the manual up to date, tell employees where they need to go, who they need to talk to, you know, quickly. It's really not a policy level decision. So, yeah, this, this summarizes this as a, um, in policy, and this is what, this is double-sided, too, so... But this is what it would end up being, and it's six policies with two sub-parts and one policy having to do with employee expenses and things like that.
There would be a safety manual, too, somewhere that would be in addition to that.
Yeah, there's a safety manual. Yeah, part of this was a safety manual. Like I said, we've already, council's already taken the action and taken that out, and that is with employee services department right now, and our safety director, Lisa, handles the, the safety manual. So a small part of this was the safety manual that's now separated as well.
Since we are possibly looking at condensing, condensing that down to, uh, really, really low, uh, are there, will there be any, would there be any significant changes in policy? Uh, what we're seeing is just a reorganization.
Well, it's reorg, it's a, it's a restatement from, I would categorize this pretty legalized language in a lot of these things. When you read through them, it's, it's pretty, um, extensive as to how things are described. So it's restated in language that most employees can read quickly and understand what the policy is, uh, without having to read through a long series of things, which are important. I'm not diminishing those. A lot of those gets moved to the directive side so that, you know, we can, we can update it or provide that information to employees when it's needed, as opposed to when you join the city and you, you're handed a policy manual, you, you should be able to read through that and kind of understand the general policies that are applied to the organizations and have some comfort level of, you know what's going on. We can't do that now. We did summarize this into a handbook we hand out policies, but that's very, very high level. So if we handed out the manual like I showed you to new employees and said, these are the employment policies of the city, um, most employees could sit down and read through this and say, okay, I get it, I understand what we're doing.
Is it gonna be, is it gonna be used as a mechanism as to change the terms of employment?
No, the terms of employment all stay the same. Like I said, it's summarizing what's already there, just condensing it, rephrasing it in the more simple, simplified language, reducing the redundancies, because a lot of the policies will state the same thing because they're adopted over periods of time. So when you adopt one policy in a vacuum, you, you sometimes have a tendency to restate things again, I, I found over a period of years, decades, you know? So a lot of this was stated in there, would happen to be redundant with another policy that was before, which is just hard from a policy standpoint because of the lack of consistency, or if one changes, then you have some discrepancies. So, um, no, there wasn't the, there's no change in the terms of employment or anything like that. It's just stating them in a much more succinct fashion and not being, continuing to be redundant with a lot of what's stated.
If I could give...
You know, with my Peewee eyes and my Peewee brain, I just cannot visualize. And I'm not against it. I think we do need to redo that, I really do, because there's a lot of redundant reading.
Right.
But I just cannot see condensing a book this thick down to this thick and not changing or taking out a lot of things. But we'll work through it as we go through it. I mean, I just can't visualize a book going from this thick to that thick and still have the same information.
You, 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 I, we'll get Adam to say something. You'd be surprised, because it is a lot of redundancy. And sometimes, sometimes in this book, we chose to, to restate entire long federal ordinances, and that's a, it's a bad practice, because if the ordinance, I mean, if the ordinance, uh, the statute changes, you have to be sure to go back and change the book. You don't always do that. Sometimes you have inconsistencies in there, and the ordinance lives on its own. So why would you necessarily need to restate it and to, you know, employees can...
We just say, it's gonna follow the federal rule.
Follow the federal rules, and then you get all the information.
Restating the whole federal rule every time, yeah.
So, so some of that, you know, that drops out several pages in there on things like the ADA and...
Yes.
Simple, certainly better, so.
That's exactly the point that I, that I was gonna make, and, and the, and example, you know, I've, um, I won't claim primary responsibility for the, I've been with the city for 11 years. I won't claim recent, primary responsibility for how thick that is, but I, I, I will accept partial responsibility in certain locations. Um, and the, the ADA policy, which I rewrote af, you know, I probably, I rewrote it when I was here, had been with the city two or three years. It was, um, it, it, it... It was, um, it, it, it restates too much of the federal law and regulations, and so, a policy that could be two pages long is fifteen pages long. So, that's, that's, that's an example, um, and I think it kind of went that way because the, for, up until two thousand fifteen, responsibility, or late two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, responsibility for the employee handbook, uh, resided in the legal department, and we were, you know, as, we were wanting to make sure...
Thorough.
We were completely thorough, and, and that is...
Lawyers will do that.
This is what lawyers will do to you, if you don't, if you don't rein us back in. Um, and so, uh, so...
We, we changed, we, uh, we switched Craig, we got him...
Yes.
Yeah, from being the lawyer version to be like, oh, no, we can't be having all this, man. You were the guy who built the...
He was being paid on the hour.
Now, I'm saying you're a city mayor, but, oh, oh, oh.
So, so what...
For the hour, when he...
We just go out of philosophy.
The ADA brings up a good example, it's, it's a very good example for, I mean, the policy from the city standpoint, a policy is, we should comply with the ADA. I mean, that's kind of the city's policy, because it's a federal law, we don't have a choice. But the policy, now, from a, there is part of that that needs to be communicated, which is why it ended up in a handbook to employees, maybe not all, all the law or anything like that, but some part of it does. So, if that moves to an administrative directive, that we can keep up to date very quickly and simply, when the law changes or new decisions come down or new regulations come down, we can change that without having to go through the entire process to bring it back to council and then pass something, really, you don't have a choice all over, anyway, it doesn't matter, that we're just communicating to employees at the administrative directive level, that makes things so much easier and quicker, and we can keep up to speed, so, that, that's, that's one example of how things can better be handled with this division.
And expense standpoint, we are gaining, too, all that paper and, yeah.
Yeah.
We just going to go on the premises of keep it simple, stupid. That's how, we just going to go...
So, I'll let that segue into my comment, stupid part here, but, no, the, yeah, stupid. Um, so, my, as far as what you guys are asking for as it relates to how do we want to deal with this, I mean, I, I will tell you, kind of partially, I think, on where Madeline was sort of going with her question, and, and certainly something to swim in in my mind. I mean, you know, if we knocked out a couple of sections at a time instead of doing one six times, instead of doing all six at one time, if we did two or three, but, you know, what I would ask from you guys and staff is a little bit of a summary on those two that, that if there are, I mean, look, here's what we're going to, here's what, the questions that we're going to end up getting about this, I suspect, is there's going to be some, uh, number of employees, some segment of employees or whatever, that are going to see a change like this, they're going to have a very common sense approach to what she said, and look, you can't go from this to this without, uh...
Taken out.
I was going to say, without treating us improperly somehow by changing something that we didn't even know we were changing. I guess what I would ask is that you guys provide us with a little bit of just, you know, some bullet point summaries of those two, couple of sections that we deal with at a time, that might just be, you know, asking to crystal ball this a little bit, but, you know, to say, um, if there's something in the current manual that lays out vacation time, and it, and it does, you know, it is forty-seven pages to where some people may be more comfortable with that because they can read every little nitty-gritty, and we're changing it to four pages, you know, hey, yeah, here's something that might change based on the way we've done this, or, or, you know, here's what you might get questions, we'll make sure you understand, here's how that's going to be addressed. Yes, we took it from forty-seven pages to four, but here's why it didn't change, maybe a couple of those big picture things that you just know we're going to get answers or, or questions on, or at least, you know, I suspect, things like vacation time, sick ti, I mean, you know, what we don't want to end up with, I would think, I, I try not to speak for council, but I bet I can't speak for council on this, we don't want to end up with, we approve this thing and all of a sudden, we've gone from being able to accrue sick time to not, you know, or some, you know, like that, we're like, well, what, I didn't know it did that, you know, I mean, I, that's the kind of stuff, I mean, that's the nightmare stuff that swims, you know, I think in our minds, so just maybe a little summary, make sure, if there are any kind of changes or perceived changes, maybe give us a little heads up so we can...
Yeah, there'll be, I, we certainly do that. There, I will tell you, there's very few changes, and, and, because the exercise was not to change anything, it was really to restate them in a fashion that's much more simple and straightforward. There were some changes in dropping out some policies that just were archaic and old, or that were, we had, we had a habit, it seemed like, years ago, of writing down everything that was a management decision, and some things are just strictly on the management side, and it's like, I don't think we need a policy on that, we don't even need a directive on that, we need to leave it to just the manager to manage that situation, and, so, so we can point out those type of changes, but anything substantive like accrual of vacation time and stuff, it's just transferred over, charted out, maybe a little more simply, maybe a little more directly, frankly, on vacation time, not even more directly, it's just restates what was in there, but it shifted to the director's side, so, because it's more administrative.
I think you guys understand where we're coming, I mean, where I'm coming from with that, it's just...
Yeah, yeah, we can, we can, uh...
You know, maybe give us, if there was something dropped out, maybe a little bitty summary of what that is, and so, we just know, okay, yep, that's something we're all cool we're dropping out to, right? I mean, on the front line, yeah, because, I mean, the reality is, I was kidding about memorizing, obviously, but, you know, the reality is, none of us are going to be able to read that entire thing, read the new, and be able to discern every single little change, so we're just need a little help with that, I think is my, will be my ask.
Yeah.
And you, what, what do you think, I mean, it's two, it's two sections at a time, is that, or can we do three at a time with, with something like that, or...
If you want to look at that sample with the summary, I think two at a time would be, we could probably do...
Three?
Three, I mean, I, I, one section has two subparts to it, but they're very streamlined, because like I said, one of them is just three versions, and how that's laid out, so...
Do three twice, then.
Yeah, whatever you think's...
Whatever my thing, just come back to us.
Okay, and then we can summarize that.
Get into three, and you think, let's go on, rock on with the next three based on what we, what's listed, that we can handle it in a reasonable amount of time, we'll do all six, I'm good with whatever, I'm just trying to figure it out.
One again, bring it back, uh, the first policy restatement, and then bring that back with two others, next council meeting, and with a summary, and then see if it works, and if we don't hit, if we don't get through all three or just two, then we can adjust as we go forward.
Perfect.
Okay.
Any other question? Thank you, Adam and Craig, good job. September twenty twenty-one dashboard?
I didn't have any questions on.
Good, because there's lunch here. And it is getting, twelve o'clock, Rick. So, uh, that, that would do it if there's no, we don't have other business or anything else because we're in a special...
Other business, council or anyone else? Stand adjourned.